Hi there, good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order and to start, and we have the Pledge of Religions. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Thank you. One announcement tonight, as you can see, Mr. Gilbert is on the big screen. He loves to be on the big screen.
He's gone now.
Oh, he's gone? All right. Well, he was on the big screen. Sorry, Todd, that was your time to shine. He'll be here for about 30 minutes, and then he will have to jump off for work-related business. Okay. Can I have a motion to adopt an agenda? Jason is first, and he'll be second. All in favor, motion passing. Okay. Do you want to do your report first, or do we?
Sure. So, pardon if we have three presentations, if you will, not necessarily a presentation. One is a recognition. Then we're going to go into the budget exit poll. Mr. Valente will do that, and then we have our architects here. However, at this point, I would like to ask Mrs. Hoffman to introduce those who are here from Speech and Debate and MathCon.
Oh, okay. Ms. Rinaldi, do you mind coming up, and all these students that are here with you come up?
Oh, it's their show.
It's their show? Yes, yes. But we'd still like you to come up, please. And these are students representing the recent state competition. I want to say it was two weeks back, something like that.
Two weeks back.
Two weeks back. Okay. And Rohan is president, and will lead.
Yeah, yeah. Whoever's going to speak, just come up.
Yeah, right now.
Yep, right in the back, yep.
Is everyone speaking?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be quick. Hi, everyone. My name is Emily. I'm a senior, and I'm a Columbia in the fall.
I'm Rohan Mistri. I am the co-president of the Speech and Debate program, and I'll be attending Georgetown University in the fall.
My name is Grace Prada. I'll be attending Biggerton in the fall, and I've been, well, I've had a few captain positions. I've been Congress, speech, and extenuating.
My name is Ryan. I'll be attending Biggerton University in the fall as well. I am the Congressional Debate Captain currently.
Hi, my name's Aria. I will be attending UC San Diego in the fall, and I am the treasurer.
Hi, I'm Joene. I am currently a junior, and I'm on the Lincoln Douglas Debate team.
All right, so we're just going to talk for a few minutes tonight about what Speech and Debate is. So I guess a good way to start is just how I got involved with Speech and Debate, from being someone who didn't know anything about it to being very involved in the organization. I actually got involved with my friend Max. His older brother had been a part of Speech and Debate, and so naturally, his older brother went like, "You need to do this club too." And so, of course, he pulled me in and said, "You need to do this club too." So, we walked in, this was eighth grade. I was very scared. I didn't know what was going on. And it is really remarkable, because you just have this experience of finding this group of people where everyone doesn't know what's going on, but everyone is willing to help each other out and learn a lot in the way. And so, eighth grade passed, and then we went on into the high school program. And I do something called Public Forum, which is a partner debate. So Max and I have been debating together for the past four years. But the interesting thing about debate is that we compete as individuals, but we also compete as a team. So I've experienced a lot of, you know, bouncing ideas off of other people, having parties together, and late-night FaceTimes to frantically plan things that should have been planned a long time ago. So it's been a lot of fun, but there's also been a lot of growth. And I think one of the biggest things that I personally have gained out of Speech and Debate is the ability to, just confidently lead. I think it's remarkable to look back and realize now that I, myself and Rohan are co-presidents of this club where we once were the very intimidated, not knowing what's going on middle schoolers. And I, Max and I now also run Public Forum, the event that we started in. And so, it's great to be able to have experienced Speech and Debate throughout my time here in high school and middle school, and to have really seen that full cycle progression of where people start, where people end, and how the people that end up in that later position of leadership are able to return that cycle to the new people. So I, just personally speaking, Speech and Debate has been a really great experience. Yeah.
Emily, where was the competition issue?
So Nationals is actually happening this weekend, so it'll be Friday morning. It is in D.C. Exciting. And then States, unfortunately, was virtual, but usually it's in New York City.
States was in the library this year.
Yeah, they all collect here. They were virtual, they were all here during the...
So in Speech and Debate, you know, we do have a lot of growth within our own, you know, within ourselves, within all the members of the club, but we also win a lot, because we're really good. So I'd like to speak a little bit to that. So as I've been on this team for like four years, and even when I was like a scared little freshman, I remember looking up to kids who were consistently winning competitions. I remember we were, you know, always winning sweeps, which is like, as a team collectively, we won better than everyone else. And, you know, even like to this day, we continue to, you know, make sweeps, win competitions. And something that happened recently, States, we did, I think this year exceptionally well, we had one of our sophomores, Caitlin Tucker. She was an octagon host. And very good news this year, we have the honor of having Rohan Mistri, who is the New York State 2022 state champion in Lincoln Douglas Debate, which is not only the first time this has ever happened in Shen, but this is actually the first time this has ever happened in upstate New York as a whole.
Can I ask you a question, too? How many of you are going into legal or policy?
Actually, I'm not.
You're not?
I don't know, any of us are.
Really? Interesting. Okay.
So to speak on a bit the national tournament that Emily mentioned earlier, we are going this weekend and Friday on a charter bus, and then we will return this Monday. And we are actually fortunate enough that we had 15 of our members qualify and are now sending to that tournament, which is very exciting. Due to COVID, this tournament has been held virtually recently, and so the last tournament we were able to attend before this year in Washington, D.C. was in Milwaukee 2019. So it's very exciting, because this is the final and culminating tournament of a year. The countless hours we spent preparing for speeches and for cases, and then performing, going in on Saturday mornings, and competing against other competitors all day. All of that hard work we put in goes into both the state tournament that we recently attended, and then especially this national tournament that we are about to attend. And so, we're really excited to go. It's a really big honor to go after this tournament, and we're very excited for that.
All right. Once again, I'm Rohan Mistri. I'm one of the co-presidents of this club. I also have served as the Lincoln Douglas Debate Captain for the last two years and the middle school advisor for the last three years. So before I go into anything that I will speak about, I want to thank, I want to thank everyone up here to, for just being along on this very long journey, a very rewarding journey, in my time here in Speech and Debate. I want to speak a little bit about our new programs, the Middle School Debate Program. And so, right now, our Middle School Debate Program is running strong with 30 members led by Mr. Conover and Mr. Clark, who are both middle school teachers here at Gowanna. And so, I'm really glad to be able to teach these kids not only a little bit about Speech and Debate, but being able to allow them to grow their public speaking skills, grow their self-confidence, and be able to develop friendships along the way, the same friendships that they'll grow on through their high school career. And it's through this middle school debate that is truly inspirational, because we get to see how these young students will essentially grow into leaders once they get into the high school level. It's great to see that, at the end of the day, that this Speech and Debate Program will continue to have a strong impact in the years forward because of that young seed we play, we place in these students at the middle school level. So with that, if I want to go a bit up to Joene, who's one of our younger members.
Just really focusing on the future of this team and Speech and Debate in general, we really want to emphasize on the idea that we are creating the opportunity to kind of expand and further our legacy into future years. And by doing so, we want to provide the new wave of students coming to not only the middle school, but also the high schools, the opportunity to not only grow as public speakers, but also as problem solvers and critical thinkers, but most importantly, as members of an active community. And students in Shen, we want to act as a catalyst for students looking to build that confidence, fluency, or communication needed to hold these roles. And most importantly, to be able to experience this club and grow as a whole, and to kind of, for us, acting as an outlet for not only communication, but also ideas like creativity and curiosity, and for us to kind of maintain this group where we are able to grow and adapt together and kind of continue to represent Shen and be able to show what we are capable of. And for that, I will hand it off to Grace.
Thank you. So I think one of, one of the biggest things that, you know, looking up to my final tournament that kind of hit me recently was, we're sending 15 competitors to Nationals. And at least in one region, for each category, you can only send three people as an entire region. So we're filling up a lot of spots. And it's one of those things that you look at, and you look at the population, and even though none of us, you know, might be going into a law or policy, what Speech and Debate allows you to do is, you know, get your foot in there. And there's so many incredible ideas on, you know, policy solutions and things like that. And one of the things that we also really want to do in, you know, in years coming is be able to foster, you know, a community of people who also want to be able to use this as an outlet for, you know, helping with their ability to create change, to be able to do public speaking, argue, things of that matter, you know. So hopefully, in future years, we'll be able to become more accessible to more people, maybe, you know, getting buses so that more students can attend more tournaments, maybe we can send even more kids to Nationals, because it is, at least right now, a pretty hefty out-of-pocket cost. So, yeah, I mean, I would love to see, you know, as many people as possible, regardless of whatever limitations in the way, you know, be able to have the same experience that we have, because it's been absolutely incredible. So thank you.
If I could add something, so I very much appreciate all of the officers coming in and speaking. So they asked me to be a judge at the last, at the States, and so I had to do a lot of homework to figure out how to do this. And I had a public forum. And that's intimidating, even as a judge, you know, to have these two teams of two people arguing, debating, a pro and a con of an issue, but these are very real issues.
Yeah.
And so, I learned a lot in the process, but I was also fascinated with the angles that these two teams took, and I had two pretty much solid days of doing it.
It's a strategy, right?
Well, there's definitely strategy, but I was just so impressed with their, it's, what I thought was really important, and I leave this to my core, and that is, this program, they're debating issues that are real life issues. And so, so the awareness is raised, that they're, you know, it's bringing them all into a conversation that they should be having. And I know that this program extends into college, and I would be shocked if all of them didn't continue in college. It's very competitive. And it also, when I was doing my homework, trying to figure out, you know, what it is I just got myself into, I found this really awesome podcast. It even talked about, you know, equity, inclusivity, and diversity, and how it's come into Speech and Debate. And I'll share it with you, because it is a real eye-opener. I'm guessing all of you have heard that podcast, because it's fairly recent. But it's really powerful, too. It's, you know, just, you know, these, these young minds, these are future leaders, getting up there and just putting it all out there. But this provides a safe environment to do that. And so, congratulations on, to Ms. Rinaldi for, thank you for being their advisor, and I'm looking, so I am going to be traveling with them to Washington.
Are you really?
Yes. I'm incredibly nervous, because now I'm going to do this at national level.
That's great.
But I'm excited. I can't wait to see how this all plays out, so.
One more question. What do you find to be your, your strength as a whole? What is your strength?
I guess, I guess our strength at the end of the day is that while we're in the room individually, it's being able to interact with and supporting each other as a team. At the end of the day, like, we still deal with the same anxieties together. We still feel the same sense of accomplishment together. So while we may be competing in those rooms individually, we still help each other, and we still support each other at the end of the day as a collective Speech and Debate team. Yeah.
In addition to that, because, you know, we're always kind of like in the same room and whatnot, the topics, you know, across events, like if we have resources, we're always, you know, sharing it with each other, and things like that. So, you know, I might not be doing LD, but I'm sure I'll have heard all about what the LD topic is, so it's, yeah, that, too.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Does anybody else have any comments or questions? Yeah, it's amazing. Congratulations, and let's bring it home.
Yeah.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we have MathCon.
Yeah, Aria, you guys will stay.
I'll see you Friday early.
Yes, yes, Friday. I'm coming. Okay. So I believe Aria is the president of the program, of the club.
Well, so I'll just get...
Go ahead.
So MathCon is a competition that we have all just taken part of, at least this year, and a couple of us a few years. It's not really a club, but we're all in Math honors society, which is where we found out about it. I'll start by introducing myself. I'm Aria. You probably saw me live a couple seconds ago. And I'll pass it on to Anthony, who has a little bit more about, you know, the competition.
Hi, my name, my name is Anthony, and I'm currently a junior. So I guess a good way to introduce MathCon is how I was introduced to it. So I first heard about MathCon when my sister participated in it when it was first offered at Shen, and that was about four years ago. And actually, my sister Ellie and Emily back there qualified for Nationals for the first time. And so, I was an eighth grader at the time, so once I became a freshman, I joined Math Honors Society, and I decided to take part in the competition. So there is, there's a regional level, which is an online competition, and it has about 32 questions in it, and you're given about 100 minutes to do it. And usually, for this year, we, for students who are in the top 96 percentile in the nation, we're invited to take part in the national competition. And so, the four of us were invited, and the national competition was, took place on April 29th, or 30th? 30th, in Chicago. And so, I think Ivan is going to talk more about what happened at Nationals.
So like Anthony mentioned, this program has gone on for several years. In 2019, at Nationals, we had two students who made it to Nationals, Ellie and Emily. And, and we had two students get into the top 12 at Nationals. In 2020, Nationals was canceled because of COVID, but we still had five qualifiers make it to Nationals. In 2021, last year, we had four qualifiers make it to Nationals, and we had one of our qualifiers get a bronze, and then several others get the honorable mention. And then this year, we had five qualifiers. We had two honorable mentions, one bronze medal award, and then one gold medal award.
So I would like to share a little bit about my personal experience during the national competition. So I first got introduced to the MathCon competition to Math Honors Society, and this was my first year. And like the whole journey, and then like taking the test there, and meeting new people, and from like various parts of the country was like mind-blowing, and I got to like learn and exhibit my mathematical skills, and the whole like experience was great, and I hope more Shen students in the future get this opportunity to participate in the Nationals of the MathCon, so.
So for the very astute of you, you may have noticed that Ivan said five of us made it to Nationals this year, but you only see four of us. So the question becomes, who is the fifth person? And the answer may surprise you, it was a middle schooler. So, so this year, for the first time ever, we had a middle schooler on his own account, asked to be part of this competition, study for himself, and then score in the top 96 percentile, and then make it all the way to the national competition where he got a honorable mention. So this is, as I said, the first time this has ever happened, but it's not completely unexpected. Ivan, myself, and Anthony have also been part of the MathCon's program, and I guess a lot of other math programs, but the MathCon's program itself is a club inside of the middle schools. And Jean-Luc, the middle schooler, was a part of this program for many years. But one thing we've definitely, all three of us have definitely seen in this program is a lot of students who are not only interested in math, but also willing to seek out and find their own opportunities in this. And with MathCon, I think it's a possibility for us to grow, because while this student had to find, like, fight his way into MathCon, in the future, I hope we can continue this program so that it's not only just something that more and more of us high schoolers will do, but also something that we can help our middle schoolers learn more about, you know, math concepts in the first place, get more interested in math competitions, and also win money at Nationals, which is very good incentive.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So thank you all for that. And so, my understanding was the gold was the first time Shen had ever received one of gold at Nationals, and so that's very impressive. Everyone's performance is very impressive. And I also want to say thank you to Aria. I know he started during COVID on September 2020, a middle school coding club. And at the time, when there were very few clubs, other than maybe FLL, I don't, if there were others, I don't think they started, and maybe until towards the end of the year. And so, that is still going strong today. And you had mentioned to me the other day that there were students that are going on to a competition for that as well?
Yeah, actually, this weekend. So there's the National Finals for ACSL, which American Computer Science League, and in our middle school, we now have three students advancing to that.
Is Jean-Luc one of them?
Jean-Luc is also one of them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens and the board, for allowing our students to come forward. As we often say here, it's about providing our students with options and opportunities for success, and it certainly exemplified that tonight. Speaking of success and strong support, I would ask Mrs. Valente to come forward and just share an overview of our exit poll, as she comes forward for those who are watching and wanting for the first time. Each year, we've been doing this for a number of years now, and it's going to provide some of that backdrop as well. So, Valente.
Hello, everyone. Thank you. It's hard to follow that group of amazing students, but I will deny that. So every year, except for the 2020 year, we've done a budget exit poll, and I'm here to just kind of walk you through the high-level summary data. We asked 15 questions, and this year, 518 individuals took the exit poll, which is about 12%, as you can see. And that number fluctuates between 17 and 22%. Last year, it was also 12% of the voters. Majority, 85%, responded yes on the budget, and the top reason for the vote is maintaining quality education. And that's pretty consistent over the years. Important factors, and this is when individuals selected very important on that question. You'll see the top three. I won't read them multi, but preserving a high-quality qualified staff, 96%, rigorous enrollment curriculum, 86%, and then academic, social, emotional health services, 78% of the top three. And just some, some key points to note here, I kind of looked at data back to 2012, so give that kind of 10-year perspective. And the academic, social, emotional health supports, which was not surprising to see, has increased 15 percentage points since 2012. Extracurriculars increased 10 percentage points since 2012, and kindergarten non-mandated factor has increased nine percentage points since 2012. Going on to the next section here, overall impressions, rate the quality of education at Shen as excellent, good, 48% excellent, 44% good, and feel that the board and administration are leading the district in the right direction, 35% saying yes, 41% saying most of the time. And when I look back over the years, that is an increase of seven percentage points with voter confidence as selecting yes for the Board of Education and District Administration since 2012. Communications, the majority, again, there's a, there's a long list, and individuals will check which ones, and not everyone answers every question on this exit poll. So you'll see the top three being district newsletter, 76%, district website, 60%, and this year, the Times Union, 47% as the top three. I found it interesting to note that the shift from last year alone, with 50% being community news was the third, to that shift to be the Times Union, and community news dropping down to 35%, as we know, is no longer in circulation. So to see that people, at least in this exit poll, say that they shifted to the TU as opposed to the Gazette or some other forms of printed communication, I guess that could be online as well. And then just a broader picture for the communication piece, increased 11 percentage points from Board of Education and public meetings, such as community conversations, since 2012. So that's a good increase to see. And a seven, seven percentage point increase in community conversations. So I apologize. 11 percentage points from public meetings, which is its own, VOE, public meetings is own selection, seven percentage points in community conversations since 2012. So that's a good uptick to see. And the largest increase in percentage points comes from the social media accounts. So Facebook, 18 percentage points since 2012. Twitter, 10 percentage points since 2012. And then last year, I added LinkedIn, because that wasn't previously a question, and that jumped from, you know, one percentage point to three percentage points. But it's good to see that trajectory, to know where individuals could be also accessing district information.
Talking about the Shenandoah Hall phase, what's Shenandoah Hall to where?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Correct. Yeah. And moving on to the taxes, the majority think that the district's taxes are reasonable, 79%. And this has, this figure has consistently increased over the past several years. It was 66% in 2012, for example. And 65% of respondents in this budget exit poll said they are willing to pay more than the maximum allowable tax levy to avoid cuts and to preserve the quality programming. And then lastly, demographics, voters with children in Shen's schools voted 89% in support of the budget. This is some things beyond the slide here. Voters in the 31 to 50 age category voted 92% in support of the budget in this, this particular year. And I thought this was a little bit interesting in that our biggest, I switched this around from, from what I saw for the majority, is we have two categories. We asked 51 for the age group to 64, and then 65-plus, but 51 and older accounted for 53%. So I wanted to kind of show that as, even though it, it looked in previous years that it was 31 to 50, when you combine the 51 and older, that is 53% of the, the exit poll data, 40% being that 31 to 50. Everything else was still, was pretty consistent, the employee numbers, 12%. That's been pretty consistent over the years for the exit poll data. So if any, does anyone have any questions for me?
I just have one question. Are you going back to 2012, because that's the first time we started asking, we started polling, or, okay. Because in past years, we've also looked at like prior years, but just going back to, I mean, it's...
It's a 10-year span, so it's a good call.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so again, uh, thanks, Valente, for, for that last presentation. Um, as our architects come forward, um, as the board knows, we've been engaged in a variety of, um, things moving forward with, uh, the look at full day K. We, um, contracted with our architects to do a comprehensive study. And the board will be hearing it tonight. And they'll be walking through the presentation.
Thank you.
As well as a report that's for board members at this point. Um, the presentation is linked to the agenda, so it's always available for the public review. So it's going to transition technology a little bit. Um, and we'll get started with our presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. So we just passed out a, um, a hard copy report. It's essentially the same material that you'll see in the presentation, just in written form, paragraph form. But, um, it is yours to go through at your leisure. All right, so an overview of what this study was all about. The purpose was, um, for us.
Kelly, hold on one second. Feel free to leave, I know you guys have math to study. So thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. Thank you.
Great job, guys. Congratulations.
Thank you.
What an impressive group of students you have. That was truly amazing. I didn't want to present after, since they're such great speakers. All right. Okay, so the purpose of this study was to explore building and facility options, um, to implement full-day kindergarten. So I just want to stress, that was all we looked at, was buildings and sites. Not, you know, schedules or a number of teachers or anything like that. It was just a facility study. And I'll also point out too, that it wasn't an exhaustive study of all of your infrastructure. We have the, um, building condition survey coming up this year. So there'll be a more thorough, um, survey of, you know, every system and every part and piece. But those was more of a big-picture study of your facilities. So what we studied was, um, the site, building utilization, infrastructure, code and SED requirements. And we also looked at the availability of additional parking at each building because if you do, um, you know, you start adding onto the building, you have more teachers, more parents, things like that, parking is always an issue. So we wanted to make sure to cover that as well. And then we came up with some options, or some options that we explored, were building reconfigurations, building additions. We also just very briefly looked at, um, a scenario of a new K through five school building and a kindergarten center. And as I mentioned, you know, this was just looking at the buildings. We know there will need to be future studies of traffic flow, transportation, moving your programs around, things that the district would have to lead the charge on that. So we just wanted to, um, give everybody a little bit of background on SED requirements for buildings and especially kindergarten spaces. And buildings that do not meet all of these do not need to be upgraded if we're not doing any work or if we're just repurposing spaces. But if we do add additions on to the buildings, then we wouldn't need to bring these items up to, up to standards. So a minimum kindergarten classroom size by SED standards is 900 square feet. Any new spaces that we make, if we were to do an addition, would have to meet the 900 square feet of, um, and that's of instructional space, doesn't include the bathroom or, or storage rooms or anything like that. We would have to meet that for full building aid and for SED approval. If we're just repurposing spaces, we are not required to meet that, but when SED recalculates building aid, they would prorate any spaces that are less than that 900 square feet. And also just quickly, um, toilet rooms within the classroom are strongly, very strongly encouraged by SED. They're not required, but they are very strongly encouraged. Overall plumbing fixture counts in the building need to be met, code thing. A library is required in buildings with 13 or more classrooms. Two gyms or gym stations are required in buildings with more than 14 classrooms. The cafeteria must be capable of serving the operating capacity of the building, divided by the number of servings. And all new construction must comply with the Americans with Disabilities, ADA, um, requirements. And any, that would be all new construction must comply. And any existing construction must comply to the greatest extent possible. So Todd is going to take you through your existing buildings. And these were all of the sorts of things that we looked at as we went through.
Okay, we'll see if we can make this a little shorter than the last time. See if I got this going the right way. I do, okay. So I, I will give you more of the plan. I'll read some of the words that, we'll skip that to, or get ourselves through this a little quicker. To qualify all these buildings, all the buildings, um, meet the codes for the plumbing fixtures. They meet the codes for the libraries and the gymnasiums, as Kelly kind of led to. Cafeterias can accommodate with likely change of the schedule. Can accommodate the amount of students additional. As she said, we will also be doing a building condition survey later on this fall. All the sites allow for building additions with a few little tweaks, as you'll see when we go through. And, um, all the sites would allow for additional parking to be added as you're going to gain additional staff and potential families and all that kind of stuff. So for Shadicon, construction in 2000, constructed in 2006, over 74,000 square feet. Um, it is a sister school to Orangian. So there is some flexibility of moving space back and forth between the buildings. Currently, it has three appropriately sized, when we say appropriately sized, that would be the 900 square feet or larger. All of the kindergarten rooms here currently are larger than that. Three appropriately sized kindergarten rooms, uh, two kindergarten and one EDK. Okay. Site plan, in case you're not familiar with it. Well, you'll see that a few more times tonight. Okay, on to the sister school, Orangian. Construction in, constructed in 1992, um, just under 99,000 square feet. Has three appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms currently as they're used. And everything else we talked about meets this building's qualifications also. All right. Site plan, as you would see if you were there. On to Changal.
When you say meets, are you saying it meets the qualifications to be able to expand? Yes, I'm just looking for, meets qualifications for what?
The.
Gymnasium toilets.
Gymnasium, the toilets.
To what Kelly was talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
So it meets, it meets all that stuff.
Yeah, okay, got you. All right, thank you.
Before today, we're not yet, I'm looking at future stuff.
Well, there's those on the.
This is, right now, it's sufficient.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so Changal was constructed in 1972. It is a little over 61,000 square feet. It is on a slope site, so this adds a little complications to additions, as we'll get to the addition talks. Currently has two appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms. Meets all the codes we talked about, same with the lunch cafeteria space. This one, I think, as we went through it, we noted it did not need additional parking. There's a relatively large parking lot out towards the street that doesn't get used as much as on-campus buildings get used. I think most parking here is filled, right, on a daily basis on main campus. So, um, this, essentially the site close up of Changal. On the Carrigan and Aranda, they're sister buildings. Once again, they're mirror images of each other. Constructed in 1966. Each building is over 58,000 square feet unto itself. So as being sister schools, there's that ability to swap classrooms if you need them by year. Each building currently has two appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms. And all the rest of the stuff we talked about meets everything that we've said previously for the other buildings. Gymnasiums, cafeteria space, parking additions, they do have space for additions. I'm going to show that upcoming here. Okay, on to Octay, which is almost a mirror image of Changal. Constructed in 1972, um, just over 60,000 square feet. Has two modular classrooms, which is different than Changal.
Can you explain what a modular classroom is?
Are relocatable or affordable, you may have, or interchangeable terms. Something that's not permanent on the site, you can take off. One of the things with Octay is since it's been built, it is now currently loaded, located in a DEC wetland area. So there, if there was an addition to be put on here, there's extra work to make that addition be approved by the state. So it's maybe possible to do it, just a few more steps to jump through.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
So with the modular classrooms, that's an issue with the wetlands?
No, it's not for future construction on the site.
The modulators are there apparently.
Yeah.
Right, they're appropriate, right. If you want to build, it'd be an issue because it's wetland. It'd be an issue, but, but could you put more modulators on, is what I'm asking.
I think we would probably have to go through the same process to verify that the state is okay with it.
Okay.
Yeah. So. Same thing with all this, all, everything meets the qualifications that Kelly already discussed. DEC is just the big thing on this site. If, and if you can notice up on the top there, this is kind of the boundary around the school. You can see the darker areas, the wetlands, that was not there when it was built and came about, about 20 years ago. Map off the DEC's site. School district is located right here in that buffer zone. So you're not sitting in the, in the wetlands, you're in the 100-foot buffer zone that they have outside of their wetlands. Okay. On to Skandal to Saga, uh, constructed in 1966. Uh, 58-plus square feet, 1,000 square feet each side is. Sister schools once again, so you have that ability to move classrooms back and forth as the student population changes by year. Once again, each building has two appropriately sized kindergartens. And all, all the rest of the stuff meets all the conditions with gymnasiums, cafeterias, and so on, plumbing fixture counts. Skandal to Saga, Carrigan, Aranda are probably the easiest ones to add parking to. So you all probably know that from going up and down the street and people park on the sides all the time. Site plan for that.
All right, so we went through all of the existing things to make sure we currently met all the requirements. Because if we didn't, then we would definitely have to start looking at, do we need to add on a gym? Or, you know, things like that. So we were all good there. Then the next step was each building principal went through their buildings and looked for ways to reconfigure or repurpose spaces within the building in order to accommodate enough kindergarten classrooms to, at least, um, the, the goal for them at the time was to at least double the amount of kindergarten classrooms that they had. And they did a great job. So the pros of reconfiguring or repurposing classrooms is that it limits the amount of additions and renovations that you need. It's cost-effective and you can do it very quickly. It's really just moving students, maybe some furniture. The cons of reconfiguration and repurposing is it provides little to no flexibility for future growth or for additional programs. Your buildings are already pretty tight. So as we tried to add classrooms into these already tight buildings, it meant we were either making them completely full or even taking programs out. So next one, that may require existing programs to be taught on a cart. You'll see we have a couple of those instances. It may require existing programs to be moved to other buildings. Renovations may be needed even with the repurposing because some of the rooms were too small. So in order to make them large enough, you may still need some renovations to do that. And then in most instances, as I mentioned, reconfiguring and repurposing will bring the building to and in many cases exceed its program capacity. So again, adding those classrooms was often taking over programs that were already existing in classrooms and trying to find a way to move those out. So Todd will run you through our reconfiguration options that we got from the principals.
Okay. For Shadicon, um, this building was originally built with three appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms. So that would be taking one back that's, was used for like the EDK. And jumping across the corridor to a regular-sized classroom, but moving a wall where the facilities, um, lounge, I guess, I'll call it the teacher lounges. In doing all those reconfigurations, uh, we proposed that you can gain, you can have four appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms and.
Additional or to?
You would have four total.
Four total, okay.
Yes.
So one additional.
One additional, kind of, yeah. And that budget estimate would be 125,000 because we have to move walls, do some ceiling work, potentially have to do mechanical or electrical also.
Is this also moving the computer lab to, correct?
That is moving the computer lab. Eliminating, eliminating the computer lab and moving their, um, what is the class? Accelerated math and ENL down to the, the computer area. On to Orangian. Orangian is a little bit different situation. This school actually has six classrooms down here along the bottom that are sized large enough to be kindergarten classrooms. It has room for the five there, reconfiguring, moving first grade around. Proposed five approximately sized, appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms. Note that there are six possible. That would kind of be at no cost because you're just moving classrooms in this building. This is the building that probably has the most space out of all the elementary schools.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because there is a chart later that shows the additional space. Would the current enrollment, would these changes accommodate our students for full-day experience or not? Just looking at the reconfiguration option.
Um, the answer is probably, but to be honest with you, that's a crap shoot because we have a ton of kids who will come back as a result of having full day K. It's not currently in our system. Because we see the trend, remember the, we did a presentation, we talk about that, that transition after first grade and the changes after third grade. And so that's why I said probably, but it's a big question. That's why Kelly's comment about the buildings already at capacity is a real, um, point of concern because we can build it for squeezing what we have right now. But the question is, what does September look like, much less right now?
So what's the assumption that we use there?
So, so we have to go back to the first presentation that we made. We have, we have metrics that look at return rates of kids in first grade and second grade and try to figure out how many of those kids were in kindergarten someplace else and then not return in first grade or how many of those kids. So if you weren't in the first presentation, that's, those are the factors. We will go through this. If, if you just say those parts to the end.
Okay, sure.
Because all this was, they're telling us a story, right, going on chapter two. You are trying to get to the end of the story without reading the whole books. It's a book on tape and they're very, you know, it's not a long journey.
Okay. I think there's a feral one. On to Changal. Changal's proposed reconfigurations end up with four appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms and a potential for one undersized kindergarten classroom. So less than 900 square feet. But that also repurposes a lot of spaces for programs that are currently here.
Todd, can you go back to that?
Okay. So the art on a cart type of thing may happen in this building with, with some of your special programs because they don't have the space.
Special one, I heard that, yes.
There's a lot of movement.
That's a lot of movement on that one, yeah.
This, yeah. Chango and Okte are pretty much the tightest buildings.
So that would be the same for Okte?
Yeah. Okte, I think, is a little worse than Chango. Okay. Carrigan and Aranda. Both of these schools in the proposed reconfiguration would end up with two appropriately sized kindergartens and two undersized kindergartens. You'll see the changes, Dr. Robinson is circling in the bottom wings of both sides of the building. EDK classrooms become kindergarten classrooms, eliminate the computer lab, things like that are happening in this building to make this reconfiguration work. Moving TSD programs to the computer lab and things like that. So that this building has that function going on of removing classes from the rooms that are currently in. All right, onto Okte.
So I don't mean to stop you.
Sure.
One second. So when we go back to Carrigan and Aranda, so again, proposed reconfiguration results in two appropriately, so it's two additional, two the same, two adding. Yes, I just want to be clear on that so you don't, you're not thinking right and forward.
True.
Right, yeah.
Right, your two existing kindergarten rooms are the appropriately sized ones, and then the other, the other two would be the undersized in each school.
When you say undersized, just...
Less than 900.
Less than the 900 square feet.
So on this slide, we've placed that the one classroom on the one side of the hallway is 800 square feet, the one on the other side's 700. So you're under by 100 to 150 square feet.
And do those have bathrooms?
Yes, yes. Every room in these corridors have bathrooms.
They have to, right?
Strongly recommended.
That's right, that's right, Cali said that.
And you'll see, you know, some of these, we were saying undersized. In Shatticon, you'll remember, we moved a wall to make the new one appropriately sized. But in these other buildings, if we're saying they're undersized, it's because we were not, we didn't have that option because we would end up making the next classroom too small.
And the reason why that's important is so that it's aidable. But when we're talking about reconfiguration, reconfiguring the space, you didn't have additional dollar amounts for these buildings. So there's no aidable expense here for this?
Correct, correct. If SED ever did come back to recalculate your, what's called your maximum cost allowance, and they looked at it, what we have to do then is we provide them with an updated floor plan with all the spaces labeled. Any that were under 900 square feet that were labeled kindergarten, they would prorate your aid at that time. But that's not something that happens yearly or anything like that. Happens periodically, especially if you're putting additions on, things like that. There could come a point where they would look at that and prorate those classrooms. Does that make sense?
Yes. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I have to go back to just to put the dot on it. So, but we're talking about the expenses, the expense to actually reconfigure these rooms, that being aidable in this context?
In this context, the only expense that you would have would be the Shatticon where we're moving the wall.
Okay.
All of these other buildings would just be picking up furniture and shuffling the students and furniture around.
Yes, that helps.
Just labor, you know, in-school labor would be all that it would cost you, cost you.
Most of the reconfiguration would be the school district owner on their own.
I see.
Yeah, Shatticon's the only one with actual construction in this scenario.
Okte, to reconfigure this, let me need an art classroom, so that would be art on a cart reference. ELA is already on a cart in this building. Moving a few other programs, an IDS room would then become a kindergarten classroom. So you would have three appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms in this building. And all three of those would be right up next to each other, adjacent. The Scano Tisago is very much the same idea as what you already heard from Carrigan and Aranda. Each building would have two appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms and two undersized kindergarten classrooms with the reconfiguration moving around various classrooms.
All right, to sum that all up. If we were to do all of these reconfigurations, what we would end up with is 24 appropriately sized, 900 square feet or more, classrooms and nine undersized classrooms. So you could, you could get 33 kindergarten classrooms. That does put some programs on a cart, things like that. But if we were to do everything we just showed you, that's what you would end up with. And as we mentioned, the only actual construction in this chapter is moving that wall at Shatticon, the $125,000. All the other schools would just be shuffling students and furniture within this building.
And Jason, back to your question a little bit. The, you want to do, you always call it a rolling over projection versus an analog projection was a range from 32 to 36 potential needs. That's assuming, I, I, you want to call it worst case scenario, we have no idea how many. We know how many kids are in private, or Shan kids who are in private school now. We know that number for the most part. But what we don't have is what I call the move-in factor. When people know that there's opportunities, people move in. And we saw that by Frank Richard with special education. And when Mrs. Smart presented the move program some years back, she was like, yeah, we have three kids. And before the program was even up or running in September, we had like six kids. And we went to move two right away and all those things for the space. So that's the factor that's hard to predict, and that's why now we go into chapter three of the story, so to speak. And this is only talking about, by the way, about growth for kindergarten. What we're not talking about is the reality of what we're seeing right now at elementary level. And Okte is a perfect example of it. If you haven't been driven by Okte in a while, you have a whole new development going behind Okte that's going to, in maybe two or three years, based upon how to build out this, impact enrollment directly in Okte, which Okte is already pretty much at capacity. And if that happened, it's the ripple effect. Okte impact Scano, Scano impact Shatticon and Arogen, Shatticon and Arogen impact Aranda, Carrigan, as the map goes around, Aranda, Carrigan impact Tisago. So that's the ripple effect of how enrollment's happening. So that's when we talk about this third chapter, the conversation shifts a little bit beyond kindergarten to saying, okay, if we're going to disrupt spaces and add spaces, we should think beyond just what that current target is, or target audience is, meaning kindergarten. And even looking at kindergarten, we should even look beyond even what I call the analytical projection that we did because what we can't predict, and there's no factor out there to say what's the move-in factor, but we know that the fact we always have to consider is space, capacity to expand and add programs. And so that's the big question mark that we don't have an answer to. And all we try to do is try to build for not what we have, but for what we potentially grow into.
Thank you. All right, onto chapter three, additions. So we took a look at where you might be able to put some additions on to your buildings as well as additional parking. You'll see, you know, not all of them are ideal, but that was the charge. See if it can happen and where it can happen. So the pros of building additions are it allows for future growth, it can potentially free up space for programs that are already being taught on a cart. There are some of your buildings that are already teaching art on a cart and ELA on a cart and maybe some others as well. It can incorporate other needs in addition to kindergarten classrooms. So you'll see some additions where we had enough space, we showed some general classrooms as well that could be used for other needs. Doesn't always have to be just for this kindergarten purpose. It will keep the buildings within program capacity limits, and it creates overall flexibility within the building. As we mentioned, right now, buildings are pretty tight, so this will just give you a little bit more space. The cons of building additions are, you know, of course, it's more expensive than reconfiguring and repurposing, just moving the students around, definitely more expensive. It'll take more time than reconfiguring and repurposing. You may need modular classrooms during construction. SED spacing requirements may result in long corridors between the existing building and the new addition. And you'll see that as Todd goes through the diagrams. There are some requirements for spaces between exterior windows. So when you start adding on, sometimes you have to like really get the new addition way out there to meet those requirements. So you'll see some kind of odd shapes. In many instances, an addition isn't possible right where the existing kindergarten rooms are. So it may end up that the kindergarten addition, you know, there might be two existing kindergarten classrooms here and we can only put an addition over here. So you could end up with kindergarten in separate parts of the building. Not the end of the world, but it is of course nice to keep them together when possible. And existing mechanical and electrical systems may need to be upsized. And that's something we will look at in further detail as we do the building condition survey and as it's decided if we should explore any of this further. So Todd will walk you through the additions.
Okay, Shatticon's addition possibilities, these are not all of them, but you can add a lot on a Shatticon. There's a lot of space around Shatticon. Currently, this looks at two kindergarten, two additions. One that's two classroom kindergarten addition over here on the right, and one that is a four classroom general classroom condition on the left side there. Also, the site here, additional parking along Maxwell Drive. See the gray slant there, which would kind of butt up to the YMCA property. Proposed additions result in five appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms, three existing and two new. Four additional general classrooms. Proposed parking results in four additional parking spaces. That's not all, we can add more, but we just kept it as a set number for now. Budget for proposed addition is $4.2 million approximately. Budget for proposed parking is $150,000. So total cost, $4.4 million.
Just Shatticon.
Just Shatticon for those additions, yes. So the goofy hallways, when we were talking about having to have a long hallway, it's because we need to have a 30-foot distance between the existing building and a new addition, especially if you face it in each room.
Why that? Why do you need that distance?
That is a SED building requirement. So part of it is if you have to exit out windows and you've got two buildings right close to each other, it gives you that space to be able to do the ingress from the building in an emergency. Is the big reason, I believe, for that.
Yeah. What about for modulators? Is there, they don't have this hallway requirement?
They are actually supposed to be separated. There is a fire, it's called a fire separation distance from the building. I think...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. But it doesn't have to have that built-in corridor?
Right, right, you would walk outside to get to them.
Right.
Yes, but it does, they do, they are supposed to be separated from the building. So it'd be the same distance without the corridor.
Okay.
And be outside.
Right, walk outside to get there.
Okay, onto Arogen. Arogen, a four classroom, general classroom addition we're looking at because if you remember from before, you already have six classrooms that are appropriately sized for kindergarten. So you could actually gain a lot of space just from that. This would allow accommodation for displaced ELA and two first grade classrooms to bring the full-size kindergarten to six classrooms, which I talked about. Site does allow for some expansion. There's some trees up back behind that building that would require being taken down, but you could push out at the backside towards the playground. Proposed addition and reconfiguration results in approximately six appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms, which are existing spaces, four additional general classrooms, three to be used for displaced spaces. We're proposing additional 20 parking spaces down here off of the front parking. Budget proposed for the additions, $2.3 million. Budget proposed for parking, just under $100,000. Bringing that total cost to $2.4, well over $2.4 million. Okay, on to Chango. Chango is a site, if you remember, that's very sloped. Quite, not quite hard, but it'll add some cost to the project to be able to build on this site. We are proposing in this slide a two classroom addition. These classrooms would be large enough to put your kindergarten in or just general classrooms. Additional parking, as we talked about, would not necessarily be needed at this site at this time. Proposed addition and reconstruction results in four appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms, two existing, two new, and without the need for displacing or repurposing existing program spaces. We also did show that if you wanted to continue on down the slope, you had another group of classrooms on very much the same as you did before, but that would be some additional cost that we wouldn't get on a more flat site. Proposed budget for this, the one addition, would be $1.7 million. Okay, Carrigan and Aranda. And this is going to be almost like the exact same talk for Scano Tisago. Three classroom addition on each of these buildings. We're talking about three classroom addition down here on the end where the kindergartens currently are. It would require tearing the old two that are appropriately sized up to make this corridor go through the center and extend your corridor out to add more classrooms on. But it does allow you to continue adding classrooms if you want to in the future. You have that center corridor going through, and you continue it on until you decide you've started using enough space of the playground area.
Just one question with this, Todd.
Sure.
So that very end piece on each side, is that included in the cost estimate that you have here?
No, that was just to show you that we would continue on with more additions if you need that at this building.
Thank you.
It may not be the only location you can put a classroom, but we thought that this was the best at this time of the 20,000-foot view because you're not disrupting playgrounds that were just reconfigured a few years ago and it's keeping it away from all that kind of stuff.
It gives you a nice little kind of kindergarten section. We were able to keep them together.
So for all four of these schools, proposed addition and reconstruction results in five appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms, two existing and two new. That's at each of these four schools. An additional proposed 20 parking spaces at each of these schools, which would be out along the schoolhouse road where you've currently got a lot of stone right now. We paved that area and maybe paved parking. Proposed budget for each building, $4.6 million for the additions. Proposed parking costs is $75,000 for those 20 spaces you had each building, multiplied 75 by 4. So total cost for one building, $4.6, almost $4.7 million times a 4. Onto Okte. Remember, this is the DEC building where we'd have to go through DEC and see what kind of requirements they would have if we were to try to add on to this building. Due to everything that's around this building, back where the portals are, where the relocatables are, is the best spot to add on because you've got parking on one side, you've got a brand-new playground, and on the paved area on the street side. And on the back side is all your mechanical space, so it's kind of hard to add on there for your school classrooms. So the addition that we're looking at off the back... So the addition that we're looking at off the back, would it add four classrooms? One music room that would add on to the current music room. One of the rooms that are in the relocatables right now is music. The other one is OT services. Additional parking spaces would be another thing to discuss with DEC as to where we can locate them, where they would have, be okay with it. This was a building that just had parking put on when we did the playgrounds, but I believe that parking is already filled up every day. So it goes along with the rest of the building. The building is very filled, period. Proposed addition results in five appropriately, appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms and one music room. Proposed parking of 20 additional parking spaces would be a discussion with DEC. Budget for proposed addition is $3.1 million. Budget for proposed parking would be $111,000. Get carried away with the ones if you're looking at the picture. So total cost is $3.2 million for additions here. Scano to Sago is identical to what we have at Barrigan and Aranda. So I will not go through that again unless you have questions.
All right, to sum that one all up. If we were to do all of those additions, and again, some might make sense and some might not, but we had to start somewhere. So if we were to do all of those additions that Todd just showed you, we would end up with 40 appropriately sized kindergarten classrooms and 160 additional parking spaces. And that would be at a cost of about $30.6 million. So sizable project. And if we were, again, to do all, all of these additions that we just showed you, the anticipated timeline, just assuming a May 2023 vote, just so we have something to work off of, design would be about May 2023 to January 2025. Take quite a while to, you know, get every single site.
Kelly, can you explain, when you go into the timeline, can you under, can you also put in, put, explain why these timelines are like this through the state and things? And it isn't just, it isn't a Shen decision. This is what, this is the process you need to follow.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. So, yeah, so these are, these are timelines that we came up with and, and design seems, seems like a lot of time. But by the time we do all of your, you know, your infrastructure, any renovations to your systems, things like that, and look at additions at all eight sites, it just takes a lot of time. The permitting phase, this is where it goes to the State Education Department for permitting. They're, based on their current review times, we're looking at about four months. So we were saying January 2025 to May 2025. And this is where we, we submit the whole package to them and then we just kind of sit and wait until they can, we get in a queue. And then we sit and wait until they pick it up. And then usually they have some comments and there's some back and forth. And then we get that final approval. Bidding, we show May 2025 to July 2025. That's about a typical bidding schedule. You want to have it on the, we call it on the street, long enough that people can really take a good look at it, put a good price to it. And then construction, we have July 2025 to January 2027. And I know that seems like a very long time. But again, if you were doing it at all eight sites, that's, that's just a lot of, a lot of work. And, you know, they're not going to be able to do it all in one summer. They're not going to be able to do it all at one time. They're going to kind of take their time and move from one to the next to the next. So that's why it takes so much longer.
Kelly, can you go back to the design and explain why the two years, the 23 to the 25, why that, that would take that much time?
Yeah, sure. Yep, it really would just come down to, you know, really taking the time to assess each individual building. So when we, when we do a design project, we have to do a code review of your entire building. That's something SED requires. So we would have to do that, that code, it's called a code compliance drawing. We would have to go through all the building codes for your, your existing building, get all that squared away. We would be meeting with the district for all eight sites to go through programming, what needs to be done. We would be going through, you know, mechanical, electrical, plumbing system, what upgrades need to happen in your existing buildings. They would have to be running all sorts of calculations for that. Can we add on without upsizing your existing equipment, things of that nature? And, and then just design of, you know, finishes, choosing finishes, all of that back and forth. It just really starts to add up. Does that answer? Right, and, and again, this is based on doing additions at, at all of the additions we showed you. Certainly it could scale back if we were not to do all of them. And for a new building, so we looked at, you know, how could this compare to doing a new school building? Since there's not a, not a site, you know, the, the building site really plays a large part in the cost of a project. You know, are there utilities there? Are we starting from scratch? Are there trees that need to come down, all of that? So the, this pricing right now is based on not having any site data to go on. It's really just taking the spaces we know you need and putting a square foot cost to them. So if you were to do a new K through five elementary school with four sections of each grade, four special ed classrooms, and then all of your other ancillary spaces, your library, gym, cafeteria, offices, things of that nature, we believe that an overall construction cost would be in the range of 20 to 30 million. Again, highly dependent on the amount and complexity of the site work, based on the space needs, just using a square foot calculation. And this does not include work at other buildings. So if we just did a K through five elementary school, that's not going to, that's only going to give you four kindergarten classroom, four extra kindergarten classrooms. So there likely would still need to be work at the other buildings as well, or at some of the other buildings.
Could we pause on that for a second?
Sure thing.
So I assume when I was looking at this, a new building, four sections here, and then that would have implied that all the other buildings would then also move up to four sections of K and sort of do some reconfiguring. Because I'm guessing there's going to be some kind of shifting around once you throw in a new building. Is that not the assumption baked into this?
No, it's not.
This particular thing, no. Please just say people look at what it's like.
Right, exactly.
So it's not, so when we're just looking at this, we can't say additions cost, what was it, 30?
It's going to be 45, 50.
So it's going to be this plus some unknown number of additions?
Correct, correct.
So they're trying to add to other space, you got to reconfigure the other space. There's other spaces on the side, they have to make them right size. So that is additional cost.
Right.
And this, this is the building if we, if we buy land?
We're getting a conversation.
Okay.
All right.
Chapter seven.
That's chapter four.
The volume.
Okay, and then the other, you know, another scenario, look, I don't even want to say another option because the options are limitless. Another scenario that we looked at would be a new kindergarten center, so a standalone kindergarten building. We, we used 35 sections of kindergarten in our, in our scenario. That was based on, one of Dr. Robinson's presentations had kind of an, an average number of 35 sections of kindergarten that could possibly happen. So that's what we used. We had four special ed classrooms in here as well, the ancillary spaces, the offices, all that good stuff. And we're thinking that's probably in the range of 30 to 40 million. And that's, you know, simply because it's bigger than, than the other school. You know, you have 35 sections here, whereas before, you know, you had four of each grade. So we're talking about 24, so 24 to 35. Again, highly, highly dependent on the size and complexity of the site work, space needs only. It does, I say it meets the number of kindergarten classes needed district-wide. Again, that was just, that was based on the presentation, the average number that, you know, was interpolated from a bunch of data. One great thing about this would be that it would allow for existing kindergarten classrooms in all of your buildings to be repurposed. It would, it would free them up. And then you'd have, you know, two or three classrooms, empty classrooms in your, your building that you could use for other purposes. And construction operations would not affect existing school buildings. Because this would just be completely off-site, we wouldn't be reconfiguring anything in your building at the same time.
Similar timeframe.
Yep, similar timeframe. It's a little, little bit longer, but, you know, again, it's, a new building takes a long time. But again, the additions, just because there's so many of them, is what makes it about the same timeframe.
So, so let me just share a couple of things before the board asks some questions because this might address some of your questions. So one of the things that, we have to do things in phases so we can understand what we're doing, right? Instead of rushing to do something and then find out, oh, I wish we would have, could have thought about something else. So, so the scenarios that you see here are some are related to each other, back to Mr. Gianna's question about the construction, new construction. We just said, if you were building a new building, what was the cost? And just give you some, some comparison. When we built Shatticon, what, 15 years ago now, 16 years ago?
2006.
It was about, after everything fully loaded, about 24 million, right? And I say fully loaded, furnished. So fast forward, just pure construction, it's about 30 million. That's not all the stuff that goes with it, right? So, so the referendum is clearly higher than that. So just to give you some comparison piece in terms of how, how things have changed. And so, so, so the reason why we wanted to do that, because we wanted to kind of look at all the possibilities. And again, this is a 10,000-foot view of all the possibilities, which then, so okay, now we have some information. We're going to run analytics again on enrollment because it's a constant piece that we're doing to get some sense of, not only kindergarten enrollment, but just enrollment. We are engaged, Capital Distribution Planning Commission specifically around growth relating to elementary with all the developments that happen. I just use Okte, for example, this happened everywhere. I, I use my Sunday routine is that every time I drive someplace, I'm like, oh my God, what's happening here? Route nine, if you drive down Route nine, that whole thing facing the Northway, that's a huge mega development that's going to that. So what's going to be implication for Chango with that? And so, so we think about the ripple effect all the time. So I'm sharing that as a background, so analytics on enrollment is just not looking at all, kind of enrollment and just rolling them over. It's kind of taking all, some of those things into consideration as well. Looking at the market space and knowing that house prices have gone through the roof. And so now what I call advanced pattern developments are really, really attractive now because they're 35, 40-year-old homes that are still now, they were like $250,000 value, with uppriced, probably $400,000 value, but the $400,000 homes are now $700,000 homes. And so most families can afford a $7,000, $100,000 home. So the $400,000 sound attractive all of a sudden. And so what's going to be upside on, on enrollment pack where those start turning over? And they're starting to turn over that. We started seeing more and more turnover in, in the sense of two generations. People coming back and moving back into their parents' house and they're staying. The parents moving out and the kids taking over mortgage. So we started seeing more of that piece taking place as well. So those are some of the factors that, but again, that with all of these things, we have to study even more so. And again, I'm, I'm talking in generalization, so I don't want no people hearing this and they didn't want to run for it. We're not putting out a list yet for, for who wants to be on the committee. But by some point, we will bring a group of various individuals together to, to, to look at some of these things in greater detail, to comb through what I call the facts and the factors, right? So facts that are pure data and the factors are all those other things that we take into consideration. Comb through those things to make sure that we really, really look at it, understand the implications of what we're doing. So, so, so with that being said, one of the things that we can't do is, is overpromise, right? And so, so, so when you see even the timeline, and I appreciate Mr. Stevenson pushing back a little bit on architects about the timeline because people are like, oh my God, the timeline's been so long. But the reality of it is, you use a Shatticon example, it was limited about eight years between conception and construction and opening of Shatticon. And so, so again, people think it's like you build your house and you buy, right? Well nowadays, if you write a contract, you're still going to have two, two years out. Depends on where you build your house, right? So, so look, it's a long process. And so, so why people don't like it, that's the reality of school construction. And that's the reason why, you don't see a lot of major, major school construction because it takes so long. It's a huge disruption in particular if you're, if you're reconstructing existing spaces. So, so with that being said, the timeline is designed to say that this is a reasonable timeline, taking into consideration that, that if, if the architecture went into technical snags in building stuff that like, oh my God, we didn't realize this, because all these buildings are 50, 60 years old. There are things that we make an assumption about until we start unpacking them back to the point that it made. And I don't want people to miss that point. We're, and the board approved the contract several months back for the building condition survey. That's where over the next, during the fall, they're going to go through essentially all the mechanics of all our buildings to assess those things. And it's going to be great for us because that's good information that goes into this decision-making as well. So the timing, the parallel timing of those things are good. So, so the don't overpromise piece is something we always do. Because last thing I want to tell people, this is going to be open in this year and then it's not. And then everybody goes berserk because planning secrets are thrown off. So with that being said, there's a couple, again, this is just generalization. I'm not asking the board to say yea, yea, otherwise. Just, just sharing some thoughts in terms of, of a multi-plan approach that needs to be studied by this committee. And I foresee potentially, again, having, going to have some further conversations with the board leadership and then the board as a whole, foresee maybe kicking off some group in, in June. We know sometime goes dormant, sometime it's hard to get anyone together. So maybe towards the end of August, maybe people get back together again in the September, October conversation point. The reason why that timeline, particularly if you saw the study that, that what I did before, we had some of this timeline outlined in that. Reason why it's important is because if we're going to make a decision about, remember, we're in 2022 right now. If we're going to make a decision about a May 23 referendum, we need to know that by November, December. We can't know that in, in, in May, it's too late, right? And so, so that's why, again, back to the study piece, and the study's not going to be a long, drawn-out study. It's going to be very focused, very tight, and we're not going to sit and have a bunch of segue, side-bus conversation. It will be very focused conversation on, on things that we need to talk about, unpack things thoroughly, go to the next thing, unpack things thoroughly, and put it all back together and see what we have. Almost up with, for those who serve on the futures committee way back when, very thorough analysis of the, the facts and the factors. So, so that's one piece that we need to study because, because we need to study then the potential of, of doing a, a multi-phase approach to this, right? So, so phase one, and I, and phase one is not for September 2022, right? September 22 is next week in a, in a planning sequence of things. What we're doing in September, we are to plan for. So, so, so put in context for folks, right? So, so from a planning perspective, so if we, if we go to the potential then of a repurposing model and recognizing all the risk conditions that comes with repurposing, reduce flexibility, what program's going to go on, on car, what program's going to be eliminated? So we need to unpack all those kind of things. And so if that's the what-if scenario for, I say, September 2023 plan, so year out, school year out, for a potential plan of doing that with the clear goal then of we're doing that, that has to be conditioned with, we're also then making a commitment to do what's the, the bird that we, that's a poor analogy. The, the dollar that we have in our hand versus the dollar which we had in our hand is the potential of a addition to building. So we know what the capacity, what buildings we have capacity to addition. So if we do a phase one kind of thing for September 23, so okay, so we're going to use this coming year working with, with a whole bunch of folks and say, if we were to move different programs around, eliminate computer lab, eliminate this, move this to this, what, what are the real implications that? Because remember, right now it's all what-if, but what are the real implications? What does that mean for schedule to say then, okay, if we're going to use that, we're going to say, it's going to be tight for three years, folks, beyond 2023. It's going to be tight. So, so when parents are going to start complaining that, hey, my child used to have Quest and now somebody telling me Quest is only limited to 15 kids because we only have this much space for Quest. I use that, for example, because it's one of those programs that circulate all the time around the district. Or somebody saying that now my child is, 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 you know, you put a complaint in it. When those things happen, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to sit here and say, that's the price we pay for fame. Just because it's going to be reality, the buildings will be tight and, and cost size will be tight. And, and so those are the things that we have to study though. I say that not to, not, it's not a threat, it's a reality that we know we have to deal with, right? Because the minute we start moving programs out, where those things land, what does capacity mean? What does the sister school capacity? Give you a perfect example for September. We have a ton of kids, when I say ton, more than a dozen plus in what grade, Sarah, fourth, fifth grade maybe? That's going to be, supposed to be in Scano, that's going to be going to Sago. Um, that's going to be supposed to be in Scano, that's going to be going to Tassago. The highest number in a long time because Scano to Scano is at capacity for grade levels. When we try to keep grade levels in that sweet spot of around twenty four, we can have grade level class of thirty, but we have hear it loud and clear. So I shared, but those are the factors that we have to take into consideration when we plan then for, say, a phase one September twenty twenty three with the commitment that we also then working with architects to plan for a referendum for May that's going to say, yes, we're going to plan this for September, conditioned on we're going to also then get a refer in the past to do some addition to buildings to create flexibility. Because I got to tell you, most people can tolerate things for a couple of years, three, four, five years, the problem is going to get better, it's actually going to get worse. Uh, and so the question is, what's that toleration zone, right? For before people start saying enough is enough. And and again, I lived it with Tassago itself was seven hundred plus kids in Tassago. That was the that was the impetus for us to redistrict back in two thousand and six. It was, we had every kids were in hallways, everything, it was, it was quite frankly, which is is embarrassing when you think about as a school district that we stand for, that we have this kind of lack of capacity, real capacity spaces for kids. And that was the impetus for redistricting, and that was also the impetus for Shatticon coming on board as an eighth elementary school. So 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 it's kind of phase one, I'm going to write this up for the board to make sure it's was a conceptual. So phase one of twenty twenty three, kind of, let's see if we can repurpose some things, what we can move around, create some capacity. Does this give us enough capacity to to feed what we would project to be the enrollment at that time, key enrollment at that time? What are the pros and cons? What are the risk factors? We have to articulate all that. That's what the committee was looking at, those kind of things. The phase two then would be, okay, so let's plan for a referendum that's going to a a May twenty three referendum next budget cycle. What's what's their referendum? What's the reconstruction of their referendum? So now we have to say that if we're going to add spaces, what the spaces going to add to accommodate then those kindergarten programs that we purpose to create flexibility back and also flexibility for future growth. And so 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 that's that's the that's the the piece then that a referendum for reconstruction or addition will bring in a phase two piece, right? So so we live in this tight situation for three years, maybe potentially four, with the potential reconstruction. And, you know, they love working with me, the architects, because they say twenty twenty seven, I say twenty twenty five, and they said twenty twenty six. And I still say twenty twenty five, and we find out in twenty twenty six. That's why they love me, so that's why they smile every time they're around me. Uh, and so 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 with the potential then of doing this phase two reconstruction piece, pushing that piece out there so we can have that kind of board. Or that's so that's phase two A, right? Or phase, it could be a phase two B, which kind of goes to Mrs. Stevenson piece. That, hey, if we get the perfect piece of land, and now we're doing two referendums in May. Referendum to purchased land, referendum to build a potential new building and or referendum to purchase land and a referendum to do reconstruction, could be a combination of things, so we have to study those, right? And so so here is the here is the challenge, though, with with, um, building a new building. S C D has very specific requirements around aidability of a new building and additional capacity. And if people wonder, it's not we're being cute when we say we have sister schools, it's not that we like twins. It's the reality of it that we maximize the aidability by building one building and using the capacity from the existing building. That's the reason why Shatticon is attached to Aranjan, because we didn't have five hundred and sixty cases pop up overnight. We maximize aidability. So to build a new school building, we also now have to study that. That's the next piece of the study, say, okay, what's the what's the what's that magic number that S C D is going to say? Hey, in order for you guys to get aid on a thirty million dollar building, and trust me, none of us don't want to be the board that don't get aid on a thirty million dollar building. Because you do the math, three is about six cents on the dollar, that's about eighteen million dollars mistake that we potentially would have made, right? A big mistake that no one wants to make. I share that because those are the things that when people send you love notes to the board, they have to consider. These are all the factors that we have to take into consideration when we make these decisions, right? And so so that's that's a that's the potential phase two B, right? To say, okay, we have land and we go through this analysis, which which now I've said it to them, and Todd is like, okay, I'll start it tomorrow. Um, to start going through that piece with S C D to try to figure out then, if we're to build a new building, what does that entail in terms of capacity and those kind of things for it to be aidable? And then if we have land, it's a two part referendum potentially in mid. And so so that become, again, with the notion of construction of maybe twenty twenty six, maybe twenty twenty seven, you know, Cali is going to grow great, add a whole different year to her life, right? To push that construction out. And then so that's so that's how this thing can be phased in over time. And I say that because this is a conceptual model that I don't want to discount the fact that that I can sit and do this by myself and probably do it very well. However, I guarantee there are going to be factors and facts, things that I'm not going to take consideration because I'm talking to myself versus having a, quite frankly, and I don't want people on the committee who just want to be on the committee. I want people who are going to have in that mindset, let's poke holes in this. No, I don't want people on the committee that's come in with a, we, if we're not doing this, we're not doing anything. No, that doesn't help the process, right? We need people who are going to come and say, here's scenario one, let's let's rip it apart and put it over there. Scenario two, let's rip it apart and put it over there. And now that we've done all of that, what do we know differently? And now let's put it back together and let's do it one more time. And now we know we have a pretty good recommendation coming forward that we can live with. And the reason why, again, I'll give you an example of that, we did that with redistricting. We've red we've redistricted, we moved, what, three thousand plus kids that went all over the place. And people are like, how's that going to happen? Because we looked at all the what if scenarios. And we said, this model should, at that point, we have been somewhat whatever, we could just say it's going to hold for six years. And the six years was a cycle, a cycle of when incoming kindergarten kids were going through all six years and what they look like. So that's that's six year one, that's like, we just pulled out here, it was like a cycle of, okay, if this six year, this kindergarten kids who aren't even in school yet, because we had a projection with birth rates and all those kind of things that the board here with the presentation. If those kids come to the system with enrollment growth, what do we expect that to happen? And as you know, as a board, you've heard, um, a friend who present all the time, the live birth rate, in fact, heard on this one A P P R, the first time live birth rate went up since twenty fourteen, then we have more kids being born, um, um, than than the prior year. And so maybe it's, I don't know, but but it, so it went up. So so the question then is, those are the factors we have to consider as we go through this whole piece. So it's a multi-tier process that we're going to have to comb through with a different, a lot of different lens, with a lot of different perspective. Come back then with the board, to the board with a recommendation and a thorough presentation. Because, yes, several, I'm sure, board members beyond it would be doing update to the board, it's not even necessary for the board clarity. It's clarity to the community to say, this is what we did, this is why we came to the decision what we did, and here's your recommendation. And paint the picture so the forward facing view would actually make sense to people who who didn't even know we were doing a study. Like, that makes sense because it has to make sense. And so sharing it with the board because that's the approach we have to take. If we rush to do something, folks, I guarantee we'll be here year after year after year asking ourselves, why did we do that for? And this is not about us, by the way, it's about ensuring that not only for kindergarten kids, by the way, it's for all the other kids in the buildings too. Because I could tell you, I told people before, we can make decisions and put thirty five kids in every classroom. But I can, I had to tell you, as a parent, I wouldn't want to have be in a classroom with thirty thirty five kids in a classroom. As teachers, it would protest while I do. This protest right now, this is to get twenty four kids in the classroom, much less add ten to that, right? So it's not a threat, but those are the realities that we have to take into consideration when we make these decisions. So so that's why I see is that next real phase to comb through that piece of it. Um, and ironically, you know, again, people think that we kind of make this stuff up. If the board would recall, we we have a a a timeframe, we had a referendum timeframe, remember that colorful chart that we said? We had a, it was actually a twenty twenty five referendum, thirty five million dollars. Because at that point, we did a future study, we figured by twenty twenty five that we would have to build a new building. And there was about a thirty five million dollar referendum. So we're sort of in a ballpark of where we are now. Reason why that number is important is also that number aligns with our debt service reducing. So we could build, we could bring in new addition, and the impact on taxpayers is minimal. Because with timing, the debt says, debt mature, we bring in. It's like your mortgage payment, right? Don't go buy your lake house until you pay off your your Clifton Park house. So if you pay off your Clifton Park house, the same money that you pay for your Clifton Park mortgage, you go buy your lake mortgage, and you're still, you don't interrupt your kids going to the mall every weekend. Um, so so I I said it because literally, that's a simple way of explaining that as a system, we have to think about it. Because the last thing we want to do is bring debt on because not only debt for buildings, it's also staffing implication. That's the other factor that we haven't taken into consideration. And that's, we've already been preparing some of that all along anyway, to think about configuration of staffing as we move forward over the years. And certainly, that has to be accelerated over multiple years as we move forward, twenty three, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, has to be accelerated. Because we we can't drop fifteen percent increase on taxpayers. We can have gradual over time adding staff and equalize over time, especially now that we know that our flat, our tax impact, as you heard Kathy presented, has been very flat, even reduc reduced over the last seven years. So I I feel it is to still keep it flat and yet create some additional capacity by spreading this over multiple years versus trying to do everything all at once. So I'm sharing all that with the board from a a big picture perspective, in the sense that as we kind of unpack and comb through all this stuff, that's literally what we have to do. And get all that down on paper so it makes sense to anyone who picks it up and looks at it, so, oh, yeah, this makes sense. And don't have to have, wouldn't, don't need to be a part of the conversation for it to make sense to folks. So let me stop there, see if there are some questions that you have.
So, yeah, so, um, Dr. Robinson, just, I I think he gave as much information as Cali and, uh, her period.
Fighting afterwards all.
Yeah, yeah, so, so I want, that's very good. Uh, so a lot of information. I think it's a reality, though. Um, he talked pretty quick, but it's not anything we haven't heard before, right? So those are the realities. We've been talking about this two path for some time, right? So the path of what we would do with existing space, one. Two, what we would do if we built, right, a new on 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 a new parcel of land. So to talk about land purchases, where we are right now, because we didn't give an update on that, we're actually looking at appraisals. We have a few selected spots in Hapoon, um, and we're looking at appraisals at right now. Our legal is doing that for us, and we should be coming back shortly with that with those.
So so let me clarify what people mean, what we mean by appraisal, right? Again, you have John Q out there and say, oh, I just had my house appraised. We're not talking about that for that purposes. We're looking at 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 comparable sales of of open spaces and saying, okay, you know, if if in Southern, Southern, Southern Saratoga, um, the last, whatever, two, three years, parcels of X Y size have sold on average of X dollars. Because one of the things, in order for us to do a referendum, we are required to have appraisals that we compare in a price to. Because otherwise, hey, I might know my next door neighbor, John, who has fifty acres, and I persuade four of you to go and buy this at eighty five thousand dollars an acre because my next door neighbor, John, is also my kissing cousin. You see the point I'm making? If if we don't do outside appraisal and lend to the possibility of things appearing that things on above board and districts have to be. And again, I share that with you, because sometimes people think that we could do this this handshake agreement. It can't be a handshake agreement. We have to, in this case, we're doing two, from two separate independent persons. To say if two separate independent individuals looking at land purchases, land sales in Southern Saratoga for extended period of time, certain parcels, certain conditional parcels, and if they're saying that average going price is X. And then we could come back as we offer to someone else, here's average going prices, here's our offer. So therefore, when we go out to 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 taxpayers to say, vote on this referendum, we're going to say yes. And here are the appraisals of of similar type properties, spaces, and that's the reason why this referendum is is reasonable, considering those factors. And so that's the reason why we have to do that, because that becomes a part of the the potential negotiation, if you will, with a potential seller of land, us being a potential buyer. Does that make some sense? So I reason why I want to really clarify it, because I don't want people to run with that term the wrong way. And that's a big first step, by the way. And the second step is, we also, engineers, we contact them with engineer. Because anything that we look at, before we even offer a proposal, we have to spend the money upfront to go in and assess the lands. How much wetlands? What's the army corps engineer is going to say? Are those other mitigating factors that we have to, because we need to know all that so that when we're sitting down, again, I I did, we're going to have to contract with a Realtor, that that when we sit down, we have all those factors in play that we know that this is buildable land. And also, we engage the architects in this process, because then they're coming in and saying, okay, well, you know, S C D said, I did, we love twenty acres of buildable property for for school, this one has sixteen this way and four that way, oh, boy, what we're going to do about that? And so so there's a lot of other factors coming into play. And that's why this this phase, this kind of due diligence right now that we're going through is important. And we 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 anticipate that that over the the next month and a half, hopefully, we'll we'll have better traction in sense of, okay, what's what's viable in terms of potential land purchases. Again, land purchase is important, not only for this conversation, but land purchase is important from from a future perspective. Because this community is not going to get less dense, it's going to become more dense. That's why more houses going in and and not being demolished, right? So we have to anticipate that as we move forward.
So, again, I don't want anybody to think, the community to think that we're dragging. I mean, there's just a lot of information. It's 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 a process, and I've been saying this all along, it's it's a process. And it's not that we don't, if we can move it faster, we would, but we can't, okay? It is a process. And again, I think we're doing corrective diligence, and I think this will be more of a board conversation down the road as well to continue to vet both of these avenues. Um, so I don't want the community to think that, okay, here you go, this is it, now we're not going to talk about it. We've been talking about this at every meeting except for the last one. There was only one meeting, we actually did not bring this up at. So it's imperative for the community to know, okay? Because I'm I'm still getting emails about this, what's taking so long? We had a whole presentation about this. This is what it's about, okay? What other comments are there? Jason, I'm sorry.
Sorry. All right. Uh, I'll just jump off that last point, I think, because because I get I get the same things, and there is a lot to do. I think I think the one of the highlights tonight that I didn't recognize as much were the options. But I think, Dr. Robinson, you made the point really well, and I think it's important to highlight for the community because there there are many steps and phases here. So this isn't, because I got a couple of emails too, people looking at the timelines, saying twenty twenty seven, whoa, right? But there's stuff we can do sooner as a temporary stopgap to when we have the full buildings or additions or whatever it is. And I think that that, to me, is a big highlight from this discussion because that means, yeah, we may not get to our state of perfection or where we really want to go as far as what we need for the full future, but we could start, we could be making progress along the way. It's not kind of an all or nothing. I I think that's an important takeaway for the community, because it means, you know, there there are steps we could take. Um, I have a lot of questions, but I have a lot of questions, I'll summarize a bunch of them because I think they really do fit with the committee you talked about. I have a lot of questions that have to do with those things that are not just building analysis, right? It's about assumptions of the number of students, what does it mean to the curriculum, staff sizes, how many people? Kindergarten center versus a new K through five. I I expect that a lot of that kind of.
So it sounded like you just volunteered to be on the committee.
Sign me up. Well, well, yeah, let me have the other caveat, because what I'll also say is, you know, I'll do the same thing you just did to the architects is to say, you know, if you don't want to be on the committee over the summer, don't join the committee. Because I don't think we're waiting, we should be waiting till August to have these conversations. I think we start now, you know, to the powers that be, but if you're too busy this summer, then, you know, find another committee. But but I'll be here for the summer. Um, but but it sounds like a lot of those discussions, you know, has to be worked out then. I think, you know, impact of the curriculum, that's a big one. Like, you spoke to of, you know, like, if we, this ramp up process and reconfiguration, you might have fewer Quest seats available, fewer this seats available, right? So even thinking through some of that, I mean, I'd like to see as a principle, if we could figure out a way that whatever our ramp up is, it it doesn't diminish in any way, it remains flat. I know that's probably the same.
No, no, I agree, I agree, Jason. And I guess the other manager should have said not, don't over promise, is try not to do no harm. Because the last thing we want to do is solve one problem, create another problem. Because at the end of the day, that's not the intent, right? So absolutely, that that needs to be a part of it as well.
So so aside from all that, I'll keep my, just a couple of questions to the to the building specific stuff. Um, the reconfiguration ideas, it sounds like those are not, there's not a huge time component to them, meaning, like, it's moving stuff.
Repurposing.
Yeah, right. So that's the same as like when we had a repurpose for COVID, we could accommodate a lot of that over summer. So this is like two year, three year process. Um, the 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 plans from the principals, were they standardized like across the district? So, I mean, like, I mean, as much as you can, meaning, it's not like Aranjan says, well, we're going to get rid of this thing, and then Aranda says, we're going to keep it. There's some stability.
They're all asked the same questions to respond to. Clearly, the governments have different needs. Um, and then we ask the ultimate question, I ask the ultimate question, okay, if we were to try to get one or two additional kindergarten, what's the sacrifices, well, not the sacrifice, not necessarily loss, but what has to move? And none of these things ideal, so 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 all these things are modification. Um, and and so so that that those, the same question, the same question we ask of everyone, and then we get that information. We, um, the architects, myself, Elizabeth, um, Kathy, and kind of comb through it and say, okay, what what are they saying? What does this look like on the map? Send it back to them, say, okay, this is what you're saying, does that look like what you're saying? Um, and so so again, recognizing that that we're we're still on a ten thousand foot plane. We're not down back to all those other questions that you have.
And then, um, I I do want to also. And then, um, I, I do wanna also say, similar to the summer thing, I do think, well, with the timelines that are there, and I, I work for the state and I know there's a lot of junk to go through and stuff that is way outside of our control. And it's a different example, but anyone who's watching, you know, chick like try and get built in Clifton Park. Obviously, it takes a long time, right? There's planning boards, it goes back and forth. But I would, I would say, and again, similar to the committee I just mentioned, is that wherever we can squeeze time out that's in our lap, that we have control over, we should be as aggressive as we possibly can to just move the needle forward. That's not intended to mean that we're not or you're not going to, I, I expect that, but it's just something, again, I think the community should hear. I think that might be a, I yield my time.
So, so what I wanted to add, I, I, thank you for saying that, because I don't have to share everything that I was, um, I had a thought on the committee too, um, but I'm actually gonna hold back. My thought with that is, I mean, we do have two new board members coming on in July. And so that, that there may be some movement, meaning that, um, I would very much would love to be on the committee.
Well, I mean, some point of board, we have the committee conversation with the board at some point. I, I didn't, I, I was joking with Jason.
Well, I'll take it, I called it first.
Really, I don't know, you know, we could talk about surveys, we could talk about advisory groups, I mean, there's a lot of structure to this.
I, I just wanted to put that out there, because you're right, I mean, we, we have a.
Yeah, folks, we're gonna use, we're gonna use a variety of different ways to get feedback.
That's what we should be doing.
But, you know, also what I wanna say is, you know, borrowing from a friend, don't let perfect, um, be the enemy of good and the good being full, we're, we're getting to full day here. And, and I, I really appreciate this, this, um, the work that Mosaic did here, this is really good. It does complement what we saw in January, um, when you, you provided specifics about how many minutes of the day would be needed and teachers. That, um, so, but when, when I say don't, don't let perfect be the enemy of the good, I think that the combination approach is probably where we're going here. It's, it's hard to say right now because we, we, the, the committee hasn't met and there's still some unknowns. And so what I'm gonna ask is that, um, and I, and I believe the futures committee has to be part of this as well. And that there is the rebalancing piece that, that we didn't really talk about. And whether it's rebalancing the entire district or rebalancing kindergarten, I mean, because you talked about.
You can, you can do one, it has, it's a case, it's a case.
But right now in our middle schools, there's, there's, there's targeted rebalancing going on. And so I, I'm just saying, it should, it should be something we talk, we talk about, that's all. I'm not saying it definitely.
Oh, yeah, oh, this is huge.
And then the other side of it is the EDK timeline. Because it's my understanding, I'm assuming that we are expanding EDK where we can. And that will, that will take some of the pressure off when you bring teachers online, so that you don't have a, you know, one hit for, what, 15?
Yeah, for a maximum step.
Um, and, and so that was the other piece that I was, that I, I asked, that, you know, that be included in this analysis. But this is really good, this is a lot of new information. And, and I, I do think we need, I, I wanna go home and I wanna watch this presentation again. Because a lot was shared that wasn't specifically in the slides. And so I think, you know.
So Mosaic architect, they take, you have to rank that video from now forward.
Is that how it works? We're still streaming, but.
I'll, I'll be real brief, but the, the part that won me over was that you don't do phase one unless you have a commitment on phase two. Because otherwise you don't have the backstop, the capacity, because you are gonna see a huge bump in enrollment. You didn't mention Global Foundries is gonna expand.
They even talked about it.
Yeah, and, and the fact that eventually a lot of the older families here are gonna shift to younger families.
We're seeing that. Uh, yeah, so, so there's a lot of factors and just one other thing for you. So since Mrs. Hoffman, she probably watch it from home. Another factor is even simple things like this. You know, um, Kelly and Todd spoke about parking spaces for the potential of additional staff. I'm thinking about parking spaces for, so, so if you could imagine Scano to Tassago, for example. So Scano, you enter the back of, um, Tuffet Park Center Road and you go around and you're going towards the common, right? And right now, probably biggest, the biggest nightmare we have is traffic on campus, period. And even though we have done a lot of things to alleviate traffic, it's a nightmare in the morning, it's a nightmare in the afternoon. It bogs up Moro, it bogs at 146, everyone hates us, right? Um, and so, 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 so again, I share this with the board, because this conversation, yes, while the target is kindergarten, if we're going to disrupt, we're going to look at everything. So if we're gonna add parking spaces, my thought is, we shared this the other day with them, gonna ask them to look and see, how do we create a bus loop behind Scano to Tassago? And so the buses drop off for Tassago behind Tassago. And we move whatever parking space that we're displacing someplace else in front of the building. Similarly, then, then Scano could keep theirs in front and, and have a bus loop, this one bus loop. Similar, when you think about Carrigan to Aranda. Do we have a, do we have a backdrop, driveway come into the back of, of, of Carrigan? And again, if we're gonna disrupt all that area, make potential relocation of some, kind to the chagrin of some playground stuff to create a bus loop and, and create more parking spaces out front. By the way, I'm sharing it with, with folks that people say, well, why are we only do all that? Well, why wouldn't you do all that? It's kind of like saying, I'm going to renovate my kitchen and I'm only going to size it to the tiny refrigerator I have. And then next time they're, I buy a refrigerator, I can't put it in my kitchen anymore, can't even get it through my door. So I'm using those kind of analogies because these are one-time things. All these buildings were built in 1960, folks, we won't be doing this every five years. And so I said it, so we have to look at all those factors and say, if we're gonna do this, how do we create capacity? How do we address other ancillary issues that we have as well, that, that, that cause that one thing could impact another thing? So these create great opportunities. So, so the point is, I'm not trying to point out challenges, because I don't believe in challenges. These are all opportunities that we have to really literally comb through and say, hey, let's look at this feasibility of doing this. And if we're gonna go out to, to the voters to say, here's a comprehensive solution, we need to be able to legitimately say, this is a comprehensive solution. And I, and, and to me, that's the excitement of doing this, because it does, for what you invest in, you're getting a significant more out of the investment. And that's ultimately what we want. We invest a dollar, we want a dollar fifty cents in return, in terms of the impact on programs, impact on community, impact on quality of the experience of kids and, and individuals coming to the campus, for example. So those are the kind of things that, that I share, but that when we start combing through some of these factors, these are, these are facts, but these are other factors we're taking into consideration that we have to look at very carefully. And come back with a very comprehensive proposal, uh, which we will. So, so, so again, I want people to really understand that, back to Mrs. Stevenson piece. It's not about dragging feet, it's that we have to be very thoughtful about doing what we're doing. Because we won't do it for another two decades, maybe three, beyond this point, right, after it is completed. So we have to bear forward. So again, that's the only point I wanna punctuate with that piece of it. And I wanna thank Kelly and Todd for, for being patient with me, because they actually did a, a run-through of this presentation. And it wasn't as exciting as, as this one was, because like nah, nah, let's not think about it, nah, nah, nah. Okay, let's try this again. And they were patient enough to bring something to you as a board that makes sense. Because that's my thing, it has to make sense to the people who are not a part of the conversation. It has to make sense, because if it makes sense to me only, it doesn't matter. It's everyone else that has to make sense. So, so thank you, I think you did a great job on that as well, so thanks to them for the indulgence. And that was all for me for tonight, probably way too much.
No, it was good and it was needed, that was fine.
So if we're gonna get to the certification of board members, can you introduce the two?
I would love to introduce my two members. So we're gonna, uh, certification of budget vote, is Kathy gonna come in?
No, you can just, if you have questions.